This is the Village Around Lake Beach Council Meeting for March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P. M. Can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Cleveland.
Here.
Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Husk.
Here.
Trustee Ibarra. Trustee Stout.
Here.
Trustee Valadas.
Here.
Mayor Nichols.
Here. All right, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you all. It's a lot harder to do on video than it is in person, isn't it? All right. Mike, can we have the approval of the council agenda meeting minutes? Do I have a motion?
Some move by trustee Cleveland.
Second by trustee Cleveland. And I'm sorry, so I have a motion by trustee Ibarra, a second by trustee Cleveland.
Okay.
Clerk, can I have the roll call, please?
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Ibarra?
He had aye.
Okay, trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valadas?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that. Move on to the approval of the two twenty-two, twenty-one council meeting minutes. Are there any changes or questions on the minutes? Hearing none, can I have a motion and a second, please?
A move by trustee Stout.
Second by trustee Husk.
Motion by trustee Stout, a second by trustee Husk. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Ibarra?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valadas?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that as well. Moving on to the approval of expenditures. We have tonight, we have the expenditures of one million fifty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. The board has everything to look over already. Are there any questions or changes to the expenditures tonight? Hearing none, can I give a motion?
Motion by trustee Davis.
Second by trustee Cleveland.
All right, a motion by trustee Davis, a second by trustee Cleveland. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Trustee Ibarra?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valadas?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that as well. Ratifications tonight, we have none. Do we have any standing committee reports?
No.
None as well. We also have no mayor's report, but we actually, Director Heinon, we're going to be talking about the business initiative information, I believe.
Yeah, I kind of wanted to bring everybody up to speed on some business outreach stuff. Matt, were you able to let me share my screen, or?
Yeah, one second here.
Or if you just want to pull up the PDF presentation, that's fine, too.
He's working on it, Chris.
Yeah, I saw this one.
You got it up, Chris?
Yeah, is it sharing?
Yes, I see it on my screen.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Yep, is the, can you guys see the front page there, Discover R L B?
Yes.
Yes.
So, we started working on developing a website for the business outreach for Discover R L B. So I kind of want to take you through a few slides and kind of show you what we've been up to. So this first one is the cover, part of the cover page. We'll have our logo up there, as well as these tabs up at top, to kind of take you into different directions for that as well. Scoring our businesses, this will take you to a link to our business directory on the village's website. Scrolling down, we're kind of categorizing this into four different sections, so we're kind of going to go with the shopping, dining, recreation and events. So, these will also have individual links to different pages on the website as well, which I'll go into in a little bit. Further down on the page, our social media platforms will be good to go, so Facebook, Twitter, Snapchat, things of that nature. We'll all have links on here as well, and then obviously the contact us page will be at the bottom. So, when you go on these tabs on the top, so if you were to click shopping, it would take you to the Discover R L B shopping portion. We kind of split it into three different areas. One is for small businesses. We're still working on branching this off and kind of highlighting some small business in Round Lake Beach. Some of the bigger anchor stores like Walmart, Meyer, Jewel, things of that nature, we'll be able to link under this tab as well. And then promote current deals. What we'd like to really do is if, let's say, a small business was looking to do a promotion for a week, we would like to get that in, and then under this download section would be a file. So it could be, you know, El Taco Norte, or whoever, shopping down here, if you click on that, their ad would come up, and then we'd be able to promote that through this website. So that's the shopping, and then moving on to dining, that's the same format. We like to really focus mainly on those local restaurants that are in Round Lake Beach, and then obviously the large regional ones like Buffalo Walling, things of that nature, highlighting them there. And then again, in line with the shopping, we'd like to really promote their deals. So if they can get us some information, flyers, we'll be able to put that on this website for them to click and download files, or download their deals when available. Recreation, we're going to highlight some local parks. We're going to highlight the lakefront beach and some of the amenities that they can do through the village. We'll definitely be working with the Round Lake area park district to make sure that all the links that we have on there are going to the parks, and then the trails. So we'll have the Millennium Trail highlighted in here, as well as any other trail paths within the village, so people can, you know, find connections if they need to. The events page, kind of ignore what's on here. This will be a dedicated Round Lake Beach Events calendar. So this automatically will update once we put things into an Outlook calendar. So people will know, you know, the dates and times of when some of these outdoor events, when they get back up and running after COVID's done. But we also want to highlight some things that are coming, so the Discover R L B Farmers Market information will be up there. So this is the flyer that we put together, we just had prints done. So we'll be sending these out as well to start getting applications in for the Farmers Market this year. So, information like that will also be on that website. And then the last one is the coming soon. So obviously, things like Tony's Fresh Market, True North, we'll go ahead and put their information up here, so people can know what's coming to Round Lake Beach in the future. Again, we just did a lot of testing on this, we're just throwing some stuff in, trying to build the website. We'll go through and fine tune a lot of this information, you know, as it gets closer to the launch date, which we're targeting, hopefully, by the end of this month, not early April, to get this thing launched. So, that's really all I had, just kind of wanted to bring you guys up to date on what we're working on.
All right, so this is more or less right now, this is the slideshow presentation of the actual website, which will be interactive. You'll be able to go to and from all these different locations. I think we have over three hundred of our local businesses, is that right, Chris, already implemented?
Yeah, if you go to the business directory at the village's website, yeah, there's well over three hundred already listed.
All right, and we'll be sending out information, having everyone sign up if they're not already in here. And my understanding, they'll be able to come in or call in and actually put on the, any benefits or programs they're giving out to customers in the area, or promotions they're running, is that true as well?
Yeah, so that'll be, that'll be part of the shopping tab, as well as the dining tab. So as long as they can get it to us, we'll, you know, we'll filter through, make sure it's, everything's good on it, and then we'll go ahead and post that for the businesses. And that's, again, free of charge, and, you know, we just, we want to get them promoted as much as possible.
That's great. During the pandemic, we know we had a lot of businesses that were suffering and needing assistance, and this will be a nice free advertising promotion for them as well. So thanks for getting that accomplished, and looking forward to the rollout here shortly in April.
Yep.
Thank you. Do we have a clerk's report tonight? Or actually, do we have any other questions on the Discover R L B from any of the trustees or courts?
No, this is trustee Valadas, I think it's great. I think it's great that he said that there'll be a monthly calendar, so everything will go on that calendar as well, so folks can look in there and see what's happening. But it's great.
It'll show all the events that we're doing, and other local events that are going on, stuff that's going on in Civic Center, our summer festivals, once we get those back rolling, hopefully after this rollout of all the shots and everything else for this COVID relief.
Right, it's exciting.
Yeah. The clerk's report, do we have any tonight?
No, we do not.
All right, any other items of business? No other items of business at this time. We'll move on to Director Rossi on the public hearing for the financial year two thousand and twenty budget. I'm sorry? I'm sorry, can we have a motion to open for the public hearing?
Motion granted, trustee Husk.
Motion by trustee Husk, second by trustee Ibarra. Will be an open meeting for the public hearing on the two thousand and twenty budget. Can we have a roll call, please, clerk?
Trustee Stout?
Here.
Trustee Valadas?
Here.
Trustee Cleveland?
Here.
Trustee Davis?
Here.
Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Ibarra?
Those here are all ayes, I'm assuming, for the public hearing being open. Director Rossi?
I thought we presented a fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two proposed budget tonight. There was a hearing posted in the Lake County News-Sun on March third. This hearing, during the committee meeting last week, along with meetings with all the elected officials, Dave and I went over all of the items in the budget in more detail. And in addition, the budget has been posted on the village's website for the public to be able to deal. All right, so a couple of challenges we ran into while creating a budget for this year. Multiple revenue sources, a large decrease due to the COVID pandemic, and although some of those are starting to come back, they've already taken a large hit on the current fiscal year, which ultimately affects the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget. On the expense side, the pension costs are going to be due in the state of Illinois, and Round Lake Beach is not immune to that. Our police pensions saw an increase of over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or nineteen percent, from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two. And then also, over the past six years, we have seen expenses rising greater than revenues. In that six-year span, expenses have risen nineteen percent, while revenues have only increased by fourteen percent. A couple of highlights, all the funds within the village's budget are balanced, meaning that the revenues equal expenses. All funds are budgeted to stay within their fund balance policy, general fund being sixty-five percent, and all the other funds, twenty-five percent. And the number of budgeted employees village-wide stays the same from the current fiscal year. So in terms of revenues by categories, this shows a graph that outlines all the major revenues for all funds. So the total proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget includes thirty million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars of revenues government-wide. And you can see tax collection is by far the largest revenue source for the village. Another large one on there is charges for services, and that mainly makes up water-related, like water sales and other water-related revenue. This graph shows expenditure categories for all funds. As normal, salaries and benefits are the village's largest expenditure. Behind that is contractual services, and a large portion of this comes from purchasing water from Jawa and other costs, other contractual costs like engineering and such. Jumping into the general fund operating expenditures, so the total general fund operating expenditures is about twelve point nine million dollars. Of that, seventy-one percent is allocated to salaries and benefits, twenty-six percent to contractual services, and three percent to commodities. The water fund operating expenditures, unlike the general fund, the contractual services is higher than salaries and benefits here. Contractual services take up fifty-six percent of the total operating budget, while salaries and benefits is thirty-seven percent, and commodities is seven percent. So the, a couple of the proposed capital projects for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two include road construction projects, updates to village facilities, well and lift station reconstruction, continuation of the vehicle replacement plan, IT infrastructure updates, equipment replacement, and sewer line maintenance. And this is just a listing of all the village's different funds, and how they funnel into the total budget of thirty million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them now.
What are the approximate road cost, road budget for this next year?
Road budget is looking a little bit over about one and a half million dollars with engineering and construction.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or concerns for the budget for two thousand and twenty-two for Director Rossi? All right, hearing none, can I get a motion to? That comes after the, no? Before? That's just the way it was set up, I'm sorry.
Mr. Roth is the one.
All right.
Mr. Roth, if you have anything to say, feel free to speak up now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Any emails or phone calls?
No.
Hearing none, then, can we, we have a motion to move forward the budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, please?
Some move by trustee Cleveland.
Ibarra? I'm sorry, I'm just going off the sheet, I'm sorry. Yeah. All right, so no more public participation. Can I have a motion to close the, close the public hearing?
Motion by trustee Cleveland.
Motion by trustee Cleveland. Second by trustee Ibarra, thank you for, everyone for clearing the confusion, and clerk, can we have a roll?
Trustee Valadas?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Ibarra?
All right, the ayes have that.
Oh wait, I didn't hear Ibarra.
Yes, Ibarra, yes.
Okay, then trustee Stout.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, sorry about the hearing, it's hard to hear everyone in here. Can I have a? Moving on to council business item A, Director Rossi again.
As was just presented, the total annual budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two is thirty million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars.
All right, so on business item A, we will go on now and ask for the motion in a second to approve the fiscal year budget.
Motion by trustee Davis.
Motion by trustee Davis. All right, can we have the roll call, please?
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Ibarra?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valadas?
Aye.
All right, so the ayes have that as well. Council Business Item B, Director Heinon, on the ordinance amending the official zoning map of the village around Lake Beach.
Yeah, so every year, the village has to update their zoning map if there's been any changes. This year, there was only one. This was the rezoning from R three to C three, the single lot behind Sherry's R and R for a future expansion of a parking lot. So that was the only change this year, so we're looking for approval, and then we'll publish.
All right, any questions or, any questions to be asked on Director Heinon on the official zoning map change? Hearing none, can I have a motion in a second to approve the ordinance?
Motion by trustee Cleveland.
Motion by trustee Cleveland?
Second by trustee Davis.
We have a second by trustee Davis. Clerk, can we have the roll call?
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Ibarra?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valadas?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
The ayes have that as well. Moving on to business item C, Director Heinon again, an ordinance approving the transfer of the volume cap to the town of Normal in connection with private activity bond issue and related matters.
Again, so every year, the state issues taxes on private bond equity, preferably known as volume cap. This goes to help fund companies with industrial revenue bonds for small businesses, or affordable housing, for rent-restricted apartments, mortgage programs, things of that nature. This is based on your population. This year was calculated at a hundred and ten dollars. Being Round Lake Beach, a little over three million to allocate. Village doesn't really have the need or programs to warrant these. So every year, we typically basically issue these volume cap numbers to two different agencies. The first one is Lake County Partners, and the second one is the Illinois Assist for the Illinois Assist Program. So, the first ordinance that you have, I believe, goes to the private equity bond clearinghouse in Buffalo Grove, which would accumulate fifty percent of the volume cap, and then the other fifty percent then would go to the Assist Home Ownership Program, which is the second ordinance up for approval tonight.
All right, the first one, item C, was going to the town of Normal. The second was for the Buffalo Grove, correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right, so can we have the motion in a second for the ordinance approving the transfer of the volume cap to the town of Normal in connection with the private activity bond issue and related matters? Can I have a motion in a second?
Motion by trustee Valadas.
Second trustee.
Motion by trustee Valadas, a second by trustee Stout. All in favor, a clerk call the roll.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Ibarra?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valadas?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that as well. Moving on to item D, with Director Heinon again, now this one is the opposite, when he was talking about reallocating the two thousand and twenty-one volume cap to the village of Buffalo Grove for the remaining fifty percent, is that correct?
Yeah, it is correct, yes.
All right, if we have no other questions on that, we'll go straight to the vote. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion trustee Husk?
Motion by trustee Husk?
Second by trustee Cleveland.
A second by trustee Cleveland, and clerk, can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Ibarra?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valadas?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
The ayes have that as well. Business item E, Director Hiltz's resolution approving certain contractors to perform emergency underground utility repairs for the village around Lake Beach. Director Hiltz?
I'm sorry, okay, I was muted, sorry. So this is a a contract for our underground utilities repair contractor. We have several contractors that we signed a three-year agreement with. This is another local contractor that we can add to help when we have multiple main breaks or underground work in the event the other contractors are unavailable. This one-year agreement matches up with the other three that will expire next year, so we can keep them in the same rotation. Again, they've done work in neighboring municipalities, and they're more than capable of doing the work that we require, the scope that we require them to do. And this is for Gaziano's Water and Sewer.
Thank you very much, Scott. It's always nice to have an extra group there when we need the help with repairs. Can I have a motion in second for the approving these contractors to perform the emergency underground repairs when needed?
Motion by trustee Valadas.
Motion by trustee Valadas, can I have a second?
Second by trustee Davis.
A second by trustee Davis, and clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valadas?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Ibarra?
All right, the ayes have that as well. Moving on to business item F, a resolution approving an award of contract to the Acres Group. Director Hiltz?
Yes, thank you, mayor and board. This is a, we went out to bid for a mowing contract. It includes all our common right-of-ways in other locations the village owns, is a hundred, over a hundred and seventy locations. Some are mowed weekly or bi-weekly, and this is also for Rollins Road, where the gateway crossing to maintain that landscape and any coating violations for tall grass. So we go out every three years, we had three bidders this year, and Acres Group was the lowest bidder. They were the lowest bidder for the last, the previous contract, so they are more than capable of doing the work, and we recommend awarding another three-year contract to the Acres Group for mowing.
And they seem to be doing a great job, so it's nice that they're continuing to come in at a lower on the bid price. So um if we could, can I get a motion in a second approving the award of contract to the Acres Group? Motion by trustee Abara? Have a second? I didn't hear who that was.
I'll go, second by trustee Stout.
Thank you, trustee Stout. Um can I have the roll call, please?
Trustee Valdez?
Hi.
Trustee Cleveland?
Hi.
Trustee Davis?
Hi.
Trustee Husk?
Hi.
Trustee Abara?
Hi.
Trustee Stout?
Hi.
Alright, the IAs have that as well. We'll move on to business item G. This is also Director Hiltz for a resolution approving an award of contract to Alpha Building Maintenance Services.
Again, thank you, mayor and board. And um this was a RFP for cleaning and custodial services, three-year contract as well. Um the RFP um looks at several different factors. Uh price, qualifications, and similar uh and capability. We also um check all the references. It's, it's the one of the uh better tools that we can use. So uh we did look at multi-systems, Alpha, and then our current cleaner, Perfect Clean. They were uh the three of the lowest six bids. Uh checked the references. Alpha was the lowest um proposal. And they're more than capable of doing the work. They were meets or meets to exceeds uh by several municipalities that I checked. So the staff does recommend awarding a contract to Alpha Building Maintenance Services for custodial work for the next three years.
Alright, um then if I can get in a uh motion in a second for res- resolution approving an award of contract to Alpha Building Maintenance Services?
Motion by trustee Cleveland.
Motion by trustee Cleveland?
Second by trustee Davis.
Second by trustee Davis. Clerk, can we have the roll call again, please?
Trustee Cleveland?
Hi.
Trustee Davis?
Hi.
Trustee Husk?
Trustee Husk, did we lose you? Alright, let's give him a minute uh to come back. Let's go on to the next, on the roll.
Okay. Trustee Abara?
Hi.
Trustee Stout?
Hi.
Trustee Valdez?
Hi.
Alright. Trustee Husk, are you back with us yet? Scott, do we go on?
Yeah, you're you're just marked that as 5-0.
Okay.
Passes, and then if you can rejoin, then you can add him back. The minute should reflect that he's
Alright, if he would, um clerk, we'll go 5-0 on that one. And if he comes back on, we'll, we'll add him to that. I'm sure he's just having uh computer problems.
Okay.
So we'll move on to business item H. Um this is for you, Scott. Um ordinance repealing and replacing certain sections of ordinance number 21 dash O2 dash O3 regarding subsection 8 dash 1 dash 1 dash 8 of the village's code. Alright, Chuck, you're back with us? Chuck, you're muted right now. Can you, are you, can you hear us? Looks like he's still having difficulties. We'll go on and and come back if he hears us.
Is he officially muted? Because I can't unmute him though.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
So Scott, how do we want to handle that, going back to item G, approving the resolution to award a contract to Alpha?
Yeah, you've already declared the motion carried.
Okay, the motion is carried. Um Chuck, we're going, moving on to item H. An ordinance repealing and replacing certain sections of the ordinance. Uh number 21 dash O2 dash O3, subsection 8 dash 1 dash 1 dash 8 of the village's code. Uh attorney Puma.
So the um changes that are proposed in this ordinance enlarge the inspection or the occupancy period time and also um in- enlarge the inspection time and then also make certain changes relative to the acceptance of response or of reports from home inspectors. And it essentially keeps the village in the process of of the inspections, but also gives some, puts some responsibility back on the on the homeowners and reflects how uh mill-state transactions are occurring at this point. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them or available to take them.
Alright, well, hearing none. Uh do we have any questions or concerns? Hearing none, we'll go on um to a motion in a second, please, for the changes and repealing and replacing certain sections of the ordinance. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by trustee Stout, second by trustee Husk. Uh clerk, can we call the roll?
Hello? Hello?
Uh trustee Davis?
Hi.
Trustee Husk?
Hi.
Trustee Abara? Trustee Stout?
Hi.
Trustee Valdez?
Hi.
Trustee Cleveland?
Hi.
Alright, the IAs have that one as well. We're on to business item I. Um an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 21 dash O2 dash O3 regarding section 8 dash 1 dash 1 dash 9 of the village's code regarding foreclosed billing and property registry. Scott?
Okay, um this ordinance also clarifies the who, what property needs to be registered and is is a registerable property. And it still keeps the um tool in the, in the village's toolbox to to address uh foreclosed and and vacant properties. It just clarifies a couple of things. And um provides, also, there, there was a a couple of terms that were in a prior version of the ordinance that the village wasn't utilizing. And um we have, so this is is a clarification and cleanup.
Alright, um can I get a motion in a second then for the ordinance repealing and replacing the ordinance numbers? Um from the cleanup that we've done on these uh subsections?
Motion by trustee Davis.
Motion by trustee Davis?
Second by trustee Cleveland.
Trustee Cleveland with the second. And clerk, can we have the roll call?
Trustee Husk?
Hi.
Trustee Abara?
Hi.
Trustee Stout?
Hi.
Trustee Valdez?
Hi.
Trustee Cleveland?
Hi.
Trustee Davis?
Hi.
Alright, the IAs have that as well. Um we are now at the point of public participation. Uh if we have anyone that would like to speak, please, uh actually, we'll since there's no one in the audience right now, we'll go straight to the computer, um see if we have any emails or phone calls.
Mr. Roth, once again, if you have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No comments? Uh any phone calls or emails? Dave, alright. We have no more public participation. Um we do have executive session. Um so if I could get a uh, no? I'm sorry, I just thought we have, okay. Next session, we have none tonight, so we have no executive session for probable pending litigation, land acquisition, or executive session in minutes. Um can I have a actually, we don't need any action on that, so we don't have. So at this point, um can I have a motion to adjourn? A motion by trustee Abara? And can I have a second?
Second by trustee.
Trustee Husk and trustee Stout on a second there. Thank you, guys. Um most, uh clerk, can I have a roll?
Trustee Valdez?
Hi.
Trustee Cleveland?
Hi.
Trustee Davis?
Hi.
Trustee Husk?
Hi.
Trustee Abara?
Hi.
Trustee Stout?
Hi.
Uh the second, the second was to trustee Husk, I'm sorry. Alright, that means we are adjourned, folks. Thank you very much for checking in tonight and uh really appreciate it. Thank you.